Well, good morning, everyone. Before we get started this morning, I'm just going to ask if you haven't already signed in, if you could this morning, just so we have a record of that. I'm not sure where the sign in. I think it's OK. Everybody looked like they signed in. Great job, everyone. Thank you for all following the rules this morning. I will call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. And I will ask everyone to stand for the singing of the National Anthem, please. I think now more than ever, we are proud to be Canadian, and it means a heck of a lot more with everything that's happening around the world and in politics these days. Before we get moving through the agenda, I would like to hand the mic over to Mr. Pat Vincent this morning. We all went through this, just so you know, you were gone, so. So that's our E for effort that we all got. Yeah, right? So also before I get started, I would like to just take a moment to congratulate Mr. Pat Vincent on 52 years in the municipal world. What a privilege it's been to get to know you and to work all alongside of you these last few months. You've brought joy, knowledge, a wealth of information, and a lot of stories and fun to us. So thank you for that. We've all learned something along the way. Yesterday, councillor Glenn Gunderson had said to me, "What a great experience, and how lucky you guys are to have had Pat." And I said, "Absolutely. You couldn't have said it any better." We are absolutely ecstatic that we've been able to enjoy this time with you and learn from you, and, like I said, seek your knowledge. I'm proud to have welcomed you to Drayton Valley and to have been added to the long list of municipalities that you have worked for. You've touched many people's hearts. I've heard from councillors, administrators, other municipal leaders in both provincial and the municipal world. What a pleasure it's been in working with you and everything you've brought to their community. So I just want to say on behalf of council, thank you so much for everything you've brought to our community. We're lucky that you've called here home for a few months, that you've shaped our community, and that you've shared your knowledge with us. So thank you on 52 years, and congratulations. It's nice to see. A lot of people don't make it, I think, more than five or 10 years. So thank you for that. So a lot of acknowledgements this morning. I will start with, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this morning? Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, members of council, we'd like to submit one addition under Section 12, Close Session, 12.2, Fire Underwriters Technical Bulletin.
OK, so 12.2, Fire Underwriters. I have survey. You said technical.
Yeah, survey, technical bulletin.
OK. Ms. Thompson, did you capture that? OK, are there any other additions or deletions? Councillor Comanna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we can discuss that for the council roundtable, but the email that I forwarded.
Yeah, OK, sure. I'll just put a little reminder here of a few things under there about the golf, right?
That's right. Thank you.
I'll put that here. That'll just be under our roundtable discussions. Is there a member of council that would like to approve the agenda for the April 9, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes with the addition of 12.2, Fire Underwriters Survey? Councillor Clark, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the March 26, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to approve the March 26, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes? Councillor Comanna, thank you for that. All in favor? That is carried. We do have a proclamation this morning. Before we jump into our proclamation, I just want to give a shout out to Dental Hygienist Week. It runs from April 4 to the 10. We had a request from a lady in our community that asked if we could show our support in lighting up the town with purple lights. And it just so happens that we've had purple lights here before in support for domestic violence against women. So we turned those lights on on the 4th, and you'll see them on for another day. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that. We do have one proclamation this morning, which is 3.1, Earth Day 2025, April 22, 2025. Whereas this year, Earth Day will turn 55, with 192 countries and over 1 billion people around the globe expect it to participate. This demonstrates how diverse Earth Day movement remains as dedicated today as it was back in 1970 to bring everyone together for a better future. And whereas now more than ever, it is imperative for communities to unite and to advocate for a sustainable future, safeguarding our natural landscapes and resources for future generations. And whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create positive environmental changes to combat the challenges, whereas it is necessary to broaden and to diversify the environmental movement to achieve maximum success. Whereas Canada's mission inspires, supports, and facilitates innovative actions for individuals and organizations to reduce their environmental impact. Therefore, I, Mayor Nancy Dawes, on behalf of the council of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2025 as Earth Day in the Town of Drayton Valley. So that wraps up our proclamations. This morning, we have a public hearing, which is 4.1. And I will declare the public hearing open at 9:10 a.m. Those present today are myself, administration, council, members of the public, and those online. The purpose of the public hearing today is to receive comment, question, and concern from the public regarding the proposed bylaw and to also consider second and third readings today. I will now ask Ms. Whaley to give us the background on this application, please.
Thank you, Mayor Dawes, members of council. Administration received an application to redistrict the parcel at 5029 48th Street from Public Services District to a proposed Direct Control Number 4 district. The proposal, the subject parcel, was redistricted from Special Community Services District to accommodate a funeral home and regulated uses in 2022 under the previous land use bylaw and a development permit was issued the same year. When the new land use bylaw was approved in 2024, the property was redistricted to Public Services District. This subject property was the home of the United Church of Canada congregation until 2018. The applicant proposes to add a crematorium component to the funeral home, and this use is neither permitted nor discretionary in the Public Services District. The alternative would have been to redistrict the property to a district that allows the crematorium as either a discretionary or permitted use or create a unique new direct control district for the subject property. Crematoria are discretionary uses in the Commercial Business District and the Medium Industrial District and the Heavy Industrial District. Direct control was developed to allow, at the discretion of council, a limited number of institutional uses that are compatible with surrounding low-density residential area and is specific to the lot and block plan. Crematoria is a discretionary use in this district, and council may, at its discretion, permit the crematorium use. The applicant held an open house at the location on February 12 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It was attended by one couple who own a home in the referral area, two members of council, and one member of administration. Planning and Development advertised the proponents' amendments in the Drayton Valley Free Press two consecutive weeks, referred this to landowners within the 60 meters of the subject lots as per the land use bylaw, and posted them on the town website and Facebook pages. The town has received many responses since the publication of the agenda.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you for the written submissions. I will now call for any further comment from anyone from administration. I'll now call for any comments from the floor. If you've already sent in a submission, please do not comment unless you have additional information that you would like to add. Any comment from the floor? No. So it is collected in the minutes and in the package that's been distributed to the public. So if you have any additional comments, then you can do so. I'll now call for any comments from anyone online.
And I will, the applicant, I believe, needs, the applicant wishes to speak.
OK, now or during the decision? OK, sure. I'll call for the applicant to come to the podium, please.
Good morning and welcome. Firstly, I'd like to thank all those that are in attendance. There is nothing better than engagement in decision-making within the community. Currently, I'm working diligently to propose the construction of a beautiful, yet modest crematorium in the building that I own in what is referred to as a residential area. Because of this, my neighborhood has expressed a bit of outrage. I'm not ignorant to our society's general fear of death. But within the last couple of weeks, my eyes have been opened, and I have an entirely different perspective on the general stigma that death creates. Although the crematory proposal is to be within the retired church, which has been part of the community since 1957, and they have seen their share of funerals. And folks, that means there are dead bodies. I'm in awe of the different perception of the community that they have for the funeral home and for cremation. My jaw has literally dropped when people try to communicate with me what they think is going to happen at the crematorium. They think that real estate values will go in the toilet. The air is now going to be polluted and contaminated, and that their children are going to get mercury poisoning. The soot created from the crematorium is going to leave a path in the wind as it's blowing that day. I haven't had the courage to ask them what they think about cremated remains that are scattered over rivers and lakes at their mom's wishes. Why is it acceptable for them to scatter cremated remains when they have absolutely no knowledge or understanding of how the human body was actually altered to get into that form? So I'd like to share a little bit about the cremation process itself so that perhaps those that are in opposition of the crematorium would actually understand what it is that we do. Can I advance this with this? Yeah, can we put that up? So cremation has started as far back as 20,000 years ago, and there is evidence of cremation beginning in Europe roughly around the 2000 B.C. And many scholars believe that the practice became quite popular around this time for Europeans. Outdoor cremation, often referred to as open-air cremation, is still widely practiced in India, particularly in rural areas, as it's a key part of the Hindu funeral rituals where bodies are burned on a pyre in open spaces near rivers, usually at a designated cremation ground. And this method has been practiced in India for thousands of years. Hindus and Sikhs primarily practice outdoor cremation, believing it helps to release the soul. Cremation usually takes place near a river, and then the ashes are pushed into the river. While open-air cremation is still prevalent, some urban areas are starting to adopt a more modern enclosed cremation. In 1850, Sir Charles William Siemens developed a regenerative furnace, and then followed by, in 1873, Brunetti's cremated apparatus was demonstrated at a Vienna exhibition. Now, although cremation has been part of funeral rites for many cultures for thousands of years, Canada's first crematorium didn't open until 1901 in Montreal. Modern cremators automatically automatically monitor their interior to tell when the cremation process is complete, and they even have a spy hole that the operator can look inside. I have been in conversations with Pyrox, and they have been on-site to check out our space. Pyrox is a Canadian company, and the proposed retort for Drayton Memorial would be similar to this one. So let's briefly talk about the actual process. So my staff, when we are called, transport the decedent to our facility. We take those folks into our care. The decedent is identified, and the funeral home obtains assigned authorization for cremation. The decedent rests in our morgue until all the paperwork is done. So we care for them sometimes for several days until the executor has signed the paperwork, and we've been given permission from the medical examiner. The body is prepared, and medical devices are removed along with any jewelry that is requested by the family. The Alberta Funeral Service Regulatory Board issues licenses, inspects, and governs the operations of all crematoriums in the province. The body is placed into a casket or a cremation container of wood or other combustible material. The regulation in Alberta is that the body must be in a leak-proof container. This allows the body to be quickly and safely slid into the cremator. It also reduces the health risks to our operators. The chamber where the body is placed is called a cremation chamber, but we commonly call it a retort. And it's lined with refractory bricks. Now, these bricks are designed in several layers. The layer of fire bricks in contact with the combustion process protects the outer layer and must be replaced from time to time. The casket is inserted, and we call that charging, into the cremator as quickly as possible to avoid the heat loss. Our crematorium will allow relatives to view this charging. This is sometimes done for religious reasons, such as the traditional Hindu funerals, and it's also customary for Japanese. But it has become more popular in other cultures as well. And that's why we think it's important to have a place in Drayton Valley where you can do a witness cremation. So the time that's required for cremation varies from body to body. Two to two and a half hours is the average for an adult body. Temperatures of the retort will range from 1,400 to 2,000 degrees. When the cremation is complete and the chamber is cooled off, the remains are swept into a tray, and metal parts are removed with a large magnet. The bones and the remaining fragments are put into the cremulator, or I'm sorry, yes, which grinds them down into a powder-like constituency. Now, that cremulator is a machine that has rotating blades and ball bearings, and they grind the bones into a powder. And that's what we commonly call cremains or ash. The cremated remains are then transferred into a strong plastic bag and placed in either an urn or a temporary container if the family has not yet selected an urn. As I mentioned before, witness cremations are becoming more popular, not just for specific cultures, but for the community in general. So if you live in Drayton Valley, you have to travel to Edmonton to do a witness cremation. When I renovated the Retired United Church to be Drayton Memorial, the space was designed for witness cremations with a window for families to view. This space also allowed for the family member to push the button to start the cremation process. This is the ultimate honor in many cultures, where the oldest son is allowed to start the cremation. This viewing experience shouldn't be hidden away in industrial park, but instead, it needs to be in a comfortable and easily accessible area in our facility at Drayton Memorial. Cremations can be integrated into residential areas, allowing for families to gather in an inviting and comfortable space. There are many other communities in the province with crematoriums in residential areas. Some examples of these communities are Athabasca. And you can see where the crematorium is. It's across the street from the RCMP station. There's plenty of homes that are across the street from the crematorium. The community of Edson has their crematorium in a residential area. You can see the condominium for seniors just behind the crematorium, and all kinds of housing all around the funeral home and crematorium. And just to draw your attention to the little red circle, that's the chimney of the crematorium. So you can hardly see it. If you didn't know it was there, you wouldn't know it was there. This is the community of Strathmore. And there's the funeral home. And across the street from the funeral home, there is a church. There are plenty of homes that surround the funeral home. And again, the chimney is hardly visible. I had to circle it so that you can see the chimney of the crematorium. And not too far from us, the community of Rocky Mountain House, that's the funeral home. And there are plenty of homes surrounding the funeral home. And also there, I made a little circle around the chimney because you can hardly see it there. You wouldn't even know that that crematorium was there. So primarily, the additional cost for families to do cremations from Drayton Valley is the transportation. We have to drive those decedents into the city and then go and pick up their cremains. In our facilities last year, 78% of our clients were cremations. So that tells you how many times we're running up and down the highway. There's additional costs to families for that because of the fuel consumption. And I'm concerned about the safety of my employees. We know what the roads were like here a couple of weeks ago with that big storm. I have to send my crew out on the road to send someone for cremation. The lack of a crematorium in this community puts additional strain on our residents, both financially and emotionally, because they know that their loved ones are being trucked up and down the highway. So now you'll say, "Well, yes, this is all reasonable, but I don't want it on my street." So I'd just like to explain the barriers to putting the crematorium in other locations. First of all, if we need to rent or lease a space, we'd be looking at some kind of a warehouse. This can be expensive to lease that space. The installation of this equipment, it's huge. It weighs over 30,000 pounds. So I'll bring a crane in and install it. And then when my lease runs out, gee, guess what? I gotta move it someplace else. So the possibility of purchasing more real estate, well, then that adds extra costs to the cremation process, extra utilities, extra taxes. I have to have additional staff to work in that building that's off-site from our regular location. And so that it makes us that we can't compete with other crematoriums. The cost would be so high that it would be cheaper to truck people up and down the highway and to send them back to Edmonton. So renting or purchasing additional space just doesn't make financial sense for a crematorium. If I'm not able to put the crematorium into the building where Drayton Memorial is, it's not going to happen. So I can't emphasize enough that if you didn't know that crematorium was there, you wouldn't know it was there. It doesn't make a whole lot of noise. It doesn't spew out black smoke. It doesn't smell. We are regulated by the Alberta Government and the Regulatory Board of the Funeral Services Regulatory Board inspects us and governs us. And we have to be licensed through them. The equipment that we're looking at, it will emit 17% less emissions than are actually allowed by the regulation. The retort will not run every day. We will batch our cremations. So it may not run for a week, depending on what happens within our community. No smell, no ash. So I'm calling you as a council to action that it's time for society to think differently about zoning for cremations. They do actually belong in residential areas where they're close to families, where families can actually get comfort from witnessing the cremation of their loved ones. We can be a leader in changing regulations instead of having to change them back when society catches up with the fact that that's where they belong. Is it really respectful to send our loved ones out to an old garage or out into the industrial area to recognize their life? So I thank you for considering the importance of locating the crematorium in the Drayton Memorial Building. And I know that this is going to benefit our entire community.
Thank you very much for that. I will now declare the public hearing closed at 9:31 a.m. Yes? So I've declared the public hearing closed, so we're moving into a decision item. If you want to go ahead? So what, typically, we don't have from the public. When I call for comment, that's your opportunity, but typically in this type of scenario, we don't take questions from the floor. Oh, okay. So I will re-declare the public hearing opened at nine thirty-one AM for any further comment or comments, not questions, from the floor. Do you want to come to the mic, please? Typically, we don't have questions. It's a comment from, on the public hearing.
Okay, well, it will affect, okay, we'll see if I'm not allowed, then stop. Administration had indicated that there had been many letters brought in opposing. Are we allowed to know how many?
Sure.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
So then, so I guess based on that, my only comment is that my concern at this point is not to change perception. Perception is reality. You know, we had, there's eighteen people that have indicated opposition to this amendment. I have a legal, properly zoned residential business right next door to this facility. And in light that, you know, we have had eighteen opositions to this, my indication that this will have a direct impact on my ability to attract tenants to my property is represented in that. Regardless of the facts presented today, perception is reality. People don't like it, and they don't want to live next to it, and it would affect my ability to rent my property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. With the presentation from Ms. Secura this morning, is there any further comments from the floor? New comments?
I could, I, I, sorry.
Can I just let?
New comment, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead. Do you have a new comment?
We've lived in this area, and our family's been in this area for over one hundred and ten years. And me, I'm a nurse. I've seen people that die. I've seen families. I've been comforting them. And they don't need extra expense at the time that they send someone away. They want to be able to be there. They want to comfort, comfort. And not only that, but if this doesn't really produce anything, why would, I, my brother-in-law has fourteen houses, and he rents them. And most people just want a place to live. They don't really care what's around them, if it's been around them forever. They just don't care. And so to me, it's wrong not to put the expense on the families, like, and a lot of them. I mean, I, I'm not getting cremated. It doesn't affect me, but it does affect this town. And we, as Canadians now, want everything in Canada. And in Drayton, we should want more in Drayton. And it's sad to say that you're forcing someone not to have something that would increase their business, would help the community, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have further comment? Come to the podium, please.
I wasn't going to say anything, but since you brought the part about extra expense on the families, so that extra expense is, we got to come at the expense of the homeowners that are in that area. It's been shown that property values drop about twelve percent in a six-block radius around the crematorium. So all those tax dollars and the, the good doesn't outweigh the bad.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment from the floor? I'll call for comment, additional comment for anyone online. And with that, I will close the public hearing. I'll declare it closed at nine thirty-six AM. We will move into our decision item, seven point one. Ms. Whaley, go ahead this morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. As presented during the public hearing, the background is to, the background is the application to redistrict from Public Services District to Direct Control District as provided in the package to allow for the discretionary use of a crematoria, among other uses compatible in residential areas. So the request is to provide second reading to bylaw, Land Use Bylaw twenty twenty-four oh three D to remove section seven point eight point two and to create Direct Control District DC four and redistrict Plan One Seven Zero KS Block Seventeen Lot Twenty from Public Services District PS to the proposed Direct Control District DC four.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration this morning? Counselor McGee?
I have a question. What was missing from my package, I think, was the amount of effort that it took for our administration to, to bring this forward. And I had no idea that Edson, Strathmore, and other communities, that, that kind of information, and this has been before us a few times, and it, it is interesting knowledge. Did we do that exploration as well as the funeral home? Or do we, how do we normally, how would we normally handle it?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee, in general, it would be at the request of council after a public hearing, when they receive information to direct administration to bring back further information, at which time we could have provided locations for you. But that would not be generally part of the effort that administration would put in in advance.
And that information was provided the last time this came to council? Just for your, just for your notes, yeah. Any other questions for administration? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counselor Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that council give second reading for bylaw twenty twenty-five oh one D to amend the Land Use Bylaw twenty twenty-four oh three D to remove section seven point eight point two and to create Direct Control District DC dash four and read District Plan One Seventy KS Block Seventeen Lot Twenty from Public Services District PS to the proposed Direct Control District DC four, RFD twenty-five zero seventy-six.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Just a question for administration. On the package itself, mentioned that the recommendations from the administration is to consider the second and third reading. Would you be able to give a little bit more background on your recommendation?
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Gomana. My apologies, instead of providing two separate motions for you, it uses the word consider. So your choice is to give second reading and then follow that with third reading, should it pass.
So you're voting on, there is a motion that's presented, so you're voting on whether it moves to third or it doesn't move to third?
Madam Mayor, if I understood Counselor Gomana's question, the administration doesn't have a recommendation to council whether they should pass the bylaw or not. It's not the administration's position to do so. Our recommendation is that council consider, given that we've had the public hearing, weigh all of the information, the pros and the cons, what's best, what's in the best interest for the community and the neighborhood, and giving that consideration whether or not to proceed with the second reading.
Any other comment, question, or debate? Counselor McGee?
Has administration had any other communication with other funeral homes in, in the area regarding a crematorium?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee, number of the staff in Planning and Growth Department have had previous interactions in different municipalities with crematoria in residential areas, but we have not had any direct interaction on this file.
Were all of the submissions FOIPed? Names? Okay, so names. So there was comment in the submission, in the submissions. So if council doesn't have any further comment, Counselor Gomana, do you have another comment?
I do. It's, it's a, it's a very difficult decision for me. For where I grew up, as mentioned, in Sri Lanka, it's a common occurrence that we bring the disease to, even to the, the home that, that we live. And, and that's, again, you know, discussed and seen as, as a normal occurrence, and it's not a issue that we see in, in Canada or in Drayton Valley in this matter. But I, I guess the, the, the part that, that's hard for me is that, because I have to leave all of that behind, and I'm taking a decision based out of the information and the feedback that I get from the community. I'm elected to listen to the community and, and take the decision on the feedback that I've, 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 I've been given, right? So that's where the, the difficulty is. It's always difficult for a business to, when they're growing, to say no. But I think there's a lot more education need to be done on this, a lot more consultation need to be done on this around the vicinity of, of the, the business. Because the feedback that I've got with eighteen letters that I've received, as well as many phone calls I've, I've got as well, it seems like the, the neighborhood is still not convinced on what actually that this will provide to the community. So that's why I said it's, it's a very difficult decision, but it's, like I said, I, I, I would take the decision on the feedback that I got from the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Counselor Gomana. Yeah, we always are faced with difficult decisions when, when you have a room full of people and we have submissions on a particular file. Within the submissions, there was positive feedback that the community does need, or that in the submissions that there is a need for a crematorium in the community, unfortunately just not in the residential area. So it's hard when you have to weigh the business versus what the residents around the community feel is their quality of life, right? So it's not that there isn't, you know, a need for the business, but it's just not in a residential. And I think as elected officials, we have to make those hard decisions. So I as well have received numerous phone calls and letters and things like that. So I have to, you know, weigh those decisions, and I have to base my vote on, I don't live in the neighborhood, so I have to base my decision on the people that live in the neighborhood. It may be a perception of what they think, and some of the information that was in their submissions could be accurate or maybe inaccurate, but I also have to respect and appreciate the way that they feel and that this is their neighborhood in the community. So it is, it is tough, but I won't be supporting the, the motion to proceed forward any further this morning. If there is no further comment, question, Counselor Clark?
I don't really know that I have a whole ton of information or enough information just in terms of the emissions side of things. So, you know, it says reduced emissions. I don't know exactly what that means. And then secondly, who, who's actually managing, monitoring the actual emissions? Is it, is it the crematorium? Is it the town? Is it their, their instruments? Like, I guess, how does that all work?
Through the chair to Counselor Clark, I, I would actually hand this answer over to the applicant with the mayor's permission.
Absolutely. Did you want to just come to that? That would be wonderful.
So the Alberta Funeral Services Regulatory Board is the one that would license the crematorium, and they are the ones that monitor. And there's also monitoring that's done by the manufacturer, and he was actually online here that he would be able to speak to that, but I think he's disconnected now. But yeah, it's monitored through the manufacturer. They would tell us what, if there's something going wrong.
Okay, and then that's obviously all remotely, and is that kind of real time?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And then that would be a direct phone call, like immediately, or just kind of a day later?
Yeah, and they can actually do things to our retort from Montreal. If, if things were going wrong, they can shut it down.
Did you want to hear any comment further from online, Counselor Clark? Are you good with that? Colin, he says somebody is online to answer that?
I don't think he's anymore. Yeah, he lost his connection, but he was on during my presentation.
I'm there.
Oh, perfect. Did you hear the question? Good morning.
Yeah, my name is Sebastian. Yeah, I did, yeah, I hear, I heard a question. Just, yeah, just to clarify, I mean, you know, to get the exact emissions, you know, you need special equipments to be, you know, hooked up to the stack, and this is, this is source testing, we call, and, you know, in Alberta, it's, it's not something that is done yearly or, or every five years. There's some provinces, you know, it has to be done yearly, and some provinces is once in a time ever, like in Ontario, it's once in a time when it would install, you need to prove that the equipment is under the regulations. It's not, it's not an equipment that is locked, that is connected all the time. Having said that, however, each equipment, cremation equipment, is equipped with an apnea meter that will detect if there's any emissions. You know, it's different, I've, knowing that is emissions, it's different to know what is, what are the emissions. So this is two different equipments. But I mean, so if there's any emissions, you know, the system will react automatically and, you know, stop the emissions. So, and like Colin said as well, I mean, yeah, we can connect from remote, and, you know, we have a tech, tech support team here that can, you know, monitor the machines and stop the machine or do the changes, you know, to make sure there's no, there's no emissions. So, and, and we, like, I like to respond to another question we had earlier. I mean, emissions are regulated in Alberta, they're regulated in all provinces. I have the data from other machines that I've been source testing, source tested in different provinces. So, and, and the results, I mean, are, I mean, like, one, one of a million of the regulations. You know, if we're talking about mercury, most of the tests that I have is we're under, like, point one, point two percent of the regulation of the limit allowed by the city or so. We're far, 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 far from, you know, meeting any requirements of any sorts. So it's same thing with the particle matters, same thing with Dixon Florence or metals. You know, we are like a thousand of the regulations. So it's not, it's not, I mean, I know people have doubts, but I mean, this is documents that can be provided if you need it.
Thank you very much for that. Any other comment, question, debate? So I will call the motion again. Counselor, our deputy mayor, Sheriffs, had made the motion that council give second reading for bylaw twenty twenty-five zero one D to amend the Land Use Bylaw twenty twenty-four zero three D to remove section seven point eight point two and to create Direct Control District DC four and to read District Plan One Seventy KS Block Seventeen Lot Twenty from Public Services District to the proposed District Control District, RFD twenty-five zero six. I will now call the motion. All in favor? All opposed? That is defeated. We will not, excuse me, we will not be moving into third reading this morning, and I will call for a break at nine fifty-one. Meeting back at, what time is it? At ten oh four AM, and we are still in our decision items. Next up is seven point two. Next up is 7.2, Ms. Terry, traffic bylaw speed amendment bylaw 2025-04P. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. So during the July 10th, 2024 meeting of council, the following motion was presented, resolution number 164/2024. Counselor Clark moved that council directs administration to look at the speed limit east of the south entrance on the ring road and to increase the speed limit from 50 kilometers per hour to 60 kilometers per hour along the south end of the ring road and from 50th Ave north on the ring road to increase from 60 kilometers an hour to 70 kilometers an hour. Counselor Sheriff made a friendly amendment for the speed limit to be 60 kilometers per hour along the entire corridor and Counselor Clark accepted that amendment and it was carried for zero. When looking at the ring road from 50th Street South to Township Road 494, a stretch of the road that is approximately 7.8 kilometers in length, there's approximately 2.1 kilometers where the speed limit is 50 kilometers per hour, approximately 4.3 kilometers where the speed limit is 60 kilometers per hour and approximately 1.6 kilometers where the speed limit is 80 kilometers per hour. It is important to note that there is a section of this roadway approximately 2.1 kilometers in length that falls within the Brazu County and the town has no jurisdiction over the portion of road that is currently posted at 50 or 60 kilometers per hour. At the regular council meeting held on March 26, 2025, a member of council made inquiries as to why the speed limit had not been changed and expressed the desire that the ring road be changed to 60 kilometers per hour. Administration clarified the request and the entire ring road around the town was to have a posted speed of 60 kilometers per hour. Previous information provided from administration to council outlined that Protective Services was starting to review all, review of all the traffic safety related bylaws within the community, which is currently being undertaken and would encompass review of the speed limits throughout the community. After speaking with the county administration, they have agreed that they would consider changing the speed limit in their southern portion from 50 kilometers per hour to 60 kilometers per hour and will bring an amendment by law to council on April 15, 2025 for their consideration. To prevent any further delays, administration has brought forward the traffic bylaw speed amendment bylaw 2025-04P for council's consideration. The proposed bylaw is intended to amend the schedule A of the traffic bylaw 2016-03P to change the speed limit on the ring road to reflect 60 kilometers per hour throughout. This would increase the speed limit on 18th Ave between 50th Street and 43rd Street from 50 kilometers per hour to 60 kilometers per hour and would decrease the speed limit on 35th Street Range Road 73 between Township 493 and Township 494 from 80 kilometers per hour to 60 kilometers per hour. The Community Safety Committee previously discussed the changes of the speed limit on 18th Ave between 50th Street and 43rd Street and was in support of the increase from 50 kilometers to 60 kilometers in theory. There was no discussion regarding the committee's stance on the decrease of 35th Street between Township Road 493 and 494 from 80 kilometers to 40, or to 60 kilometers. Administration recommends that council reconsider their request to decrease the speed limit on 35th Street between Township Road 493 and 494 from 80 to 60 without further public consultation and research being completed. Administration believes that the public would not be in support of the decrease of that speed limit in this area. And I'll open it. I did, so I had said, like, the county will be taking theirs on the 15th, so we're just going to go for first reading today and see whether or not you guys want to amend that, amend the bylaw again for that 80 section and leave that 80 instead of decreasing it to 60. And then we'll see where they go on the 15th and I'll come back for second, third reading on April 22nd.
Okay, thank you. So since this was, there was a motion made on this, Counselor Clark had made a motion to direct administration to look at the speed limits. Because we're not amending the bylaw, but we're amending the schedule, do we still have to have the three readings?
Yes.
Okay, and then so what, what the request is, is, I know we talked about from Scotty's all the way to just past the water treatment plant, that all being 60. And so I think that's what the request is. And then you're asking if we want to change beyond the Cooley Road from the 80 to the 60?
Yeah, thank you for the questions. So yes, so in that, the actual motion, it was, it was kind of unclear because it said the entire corridor, which would mean from Canco or Scotty's all the way to Township 494. We don't, I think that that was just a miscommunication on that one. And I think that you just meant to the water treatment plant to be all 60, that entire.
Cooley, yeah.
So that's why I think we do first reading and then you guys amend that portion and I'll come back without that included on the next go around.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to go to Counselor Clark first to question or comment just because he's made the motion.
Yeah, for sure. I think for the sake of clarity, yes, this was just for the portion from the Derricks to the Cooley and then leave north of the Cooley 80.
So Madam Mayor, through the chair to Counselor Clark and all members of council, because the resolution 164/2024 and the friendly amendment by Counselor Sheriff stated that the, the speed limit along the entire corridor, that's the direction that the administration had to take. We thank you for that clarification. So if council's prepared to give the bylaw as it presently sits first reading today, we'll wait until after the 15th and get county, county council confirmation that they're changing theirs from 50 to 60, then we can bring it back in two weeks' time with council making amendment, that second reading to reduce the area to the original intent and give third reading, everything will be handled appropriately and proper.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Councilor Commander, do you have a question for administration?
I do. Just so my understanding, so the recommended motion as presented means that we are increasing from 60 to 80?
Yeah, correct. So, well, because there's a, the one with the friendly amendment. So you could take the alternative, which is that council give first reading to bylaw 2025-04P as presented in RFD 25079 with the amendment to schedule A to keep the 80 kilometer per hour section of road as is.
So that'll, that'll be the alternative.
Excuse me, sorry, Madam Mayor, through the chair to Councilor Commander, you could do that today as well. Yeah, and just save one step and then come back, give second, third readings after the counties pass their amendment.
Okay. So Ms. Thompson, do you have that captured, what Ms. Terry had said for the motion, the alternate? Councilor Commander, do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll try. I would like to make a motion that council accept the traffic bylaw 2025-04P as presented in RFD 25079 and to keep the speed limit at 80 kilometers per hour for the portion 493 and 494. Would that be okay?
49. Yeah, correct.
493, 494.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the motion. So is that, that is very clear there? Okay, we got that. Ms. Thompson, did you capture all of that? Okay, that was Counselor Commander that had made the motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Counselor McGee?
For my clarification, if I leave Rocky Rapids store heading south, I'm, I can, going by the airport, I'm 80K. I'm 80K until I drop through the Cooley, top of the Cooley Hill, where there's crossroads there because the sidewalk ends. No.
North of the, north of the Cooley is where it turns 80. And when you come up the.
Yeah, so you go up the top of the hill if you're heading north, top of the hill, you can go 80 all the way to Rocky Rapids. And, yeah.
Correct. So it stays the exact same right there as it is now?
So if you're going to have a speed limit change, it'll be clear right by the old school, if I might, right?
Yep. Old school, all the way to the Derricks.
All the way to the Derricks, okay. And we wait for the outcome of the county council.
Correct.
On their issue, yeah. And the third piece of the question is, is that there was at one time a discussion about where we have people riding out on the road and back in. You recall the walkway got sort of a little bit funky there? Funkies, I'm interested.
Where are you thinking?
Yeah. No, I know where he's talking. Thank you for the question through the chair to Counselor McGee. So it's where those concrete barricades are and where the alignment is, the trail is close to the road, they put the concrete barricades. So I don't know what the outcome of it was, but I will talk to administration with the county. They did at their last council meeting, bring an RFD for council to realign that trail to move it away from the roadway. So I'm hoping that's passed and I'll let you guys know on, on the 22nd when I come back.
Yeah, and that's important. Lastly, I'm noticing July 24th and we're addressing it, were we doing a study the whole year?
This, are you talking about the traffic survey?
Madam Mayor, through the chair to Counselor McGee and to all members of council, administration had been hesitant to move forward with this and as included in the report, the intent was to review all traffic safety related bylaws. When this matter was brought up at the last council meeting, I said, sorry, administration, we've got clear direction from council, we act on this now, you complete the rest of your review. But this matter's been outstanding for a long time and since Counselor Clark raised the issue, we deal with it. So that's why it's being dealt with.
Wonderful, thank you very much for that. There was a motion on the floor from Counselor Commander. If there's no further question, comment or debate, I'll call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. We'll move through our decision items. Next up is 7.3. We seem to have a return on all of our decision items this morning, so. Good morning, Mr. Von Klaveren.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and through the chair to the rest of council, I'm happy to present this report. This matter, of course, has come to council already a few times in the past weeks. At the committee meeting of March 20th, 2025, the direction was given to E-PAC, the project group, to conduct a public consultation regarding the expansion plan, which includes the elimination of the walkway while filling the full lot between the existing theater and shop on the south side of the open space, having an opportunity for the community to engage in municipal affairs or matters and processes that fits the strategic pillar of an open communication and consultation. So for the written result, of course, the committee undertook that and please see the attachment instead of that administration was editing it in the words smitting. So the attachment represents the consultation that was done by the E-PAC committee with the surrounding businesses. The result of that public feedback is gathered and presented by the E-PAC group and that's information, of course, that is to be considered by council on their request in their decision regarding support of the presented expansion. We talk about lot seven, that's the open space, of course, and also in the paperwork, it's clear that in the past, this lot was purchased with the intent of phase two of the expansion of the E-PAC. When Brazil County came the co-owner, the integrate and integrated partner of this project, this was basically reconfirmed with that agreement as well because it speaks to that too. Based on the project proposal, the opportunity to enhance the quality of life for the community and the original intent of the use of the lands, administration formulated the recommended action to support the expansion plan and the efforts for E-PAC to strive bringing phase two to reality. With that, of course, the motion that's recommended that council support the E-PAC in their design concept of the expansion of their facility, provided any budgetary impact to the town of Drayton Valley be brought back to council for approval. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration this morning? Councilor McGee?
I thought I missed a couple of meetings and I apologize for that, sort of. In general, we've talked about it here a few weeks ago and sent it away and now we're back. So to your point, we're bringing back and, and so the decision was made, but we're, are we asking for a different decision than the one I missed?
No, no, it's, the decision is being asked for the E-PAC committee to move forward with fundraising efforts for their expansion. Nope? Okay, if there's no further question, is there a member of council like to make a motion? Counselor McGee?
I would make a recommendation that council support the E-PAC in their design concept of the expansion of the facility, provided any budgetary impact in the town of Drayton Valley be brought back to council for approval.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
I wanted to make a bit of a point of clarity. I know there was some, it was a little word for heated maybe at the last council meeting. I think at no time was, was anybody on council not supportive of this program that they're going with. I think however, though, I think what we really wanted to do is make sure the community was engaged. And I think there was a feeling around the table that that wasn't the case. So just for the point of clarity, again, no point was council, I don't think, not supportive of this.
You're absolutely right. I think this is a fantastic addition and expansion to our community. We have outdoor recreation and indoor recreation and plenty to do here, so it's nice to see the expansion of our arts and culture. I think that, you know, for a community our size, it's, it's very exciting and, you know, I think we're very lucky to have the E-PAC and to see that expand, I think, would just be absolutely wonderful. I know that as part of the report, it was included that the councils at the time had purchased that land for the expansion. So I think that the idea was always there all along and just as councils and administrations changed, things had changed and you kind of get that loss. So I appreciate the efforts of the committee going out and talking to the, to the surrounding businesses, getting that feedback. And I'm excited to see them start fundraising and get this project underway and hopefully we'll be able to see them raise some dollars and be successful in being the recipients of grants and adding to the arts of our community. So I think it's a great, great initiative that I'm happy to see come back. If there's no further comment, question, debate, there is a motion on the floor from Counselor McGee. I'll call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. And that wraps up our decision items this morning. Next up is our council reports and I'll start with Counselor Clark this morning.
I actually had nothing on the go. I was a little bit sick the last little bit, so.
That's right. Okay, well, hopefully you're getting better now. Next up is Counselor Evans.
I don't know why that always catches me off guard, but. Let me see, just a few things. March 27th, went to the joint council coffee. Unfortunately, the weather was so terrible, we had only a couple of people show up. But we'll see, maybe we can consider trying it again at some point. April 1st, the policing priorities meetings, meeting, went over what the RCMP is looking at, established our priorities. April 3rd, I attended the fundraising golf tournament meeting online. I thought that was productive. Administration seems to, seems to have everything well in hand and organized, so looking forward to that going ahead and raising some money for some very worthwhile organizations. And lastly, just April 8th, yesterday, our, our celebration of 52 years of service for Mr. Pat Vincent. So that was good, not only to shake Pat's hand and congratulate him on his dedication, but also it's nice to see administration and all our, all our field staff, public works folks and everybody get together for a change. It's tough to do with the locations of our buildings, but it's, it's good to see when it happens. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Commander.
Thank you. I just come off guard every time. On the 27th, as Counsel Evans mentioned, went to the joint council coffee meeting or gathering, but unfortunately, there wasn't a whole lot of engagement there just because of the weather that we had that day. Exactly right, yeah. Only the keeners were there, I guess. On the 31st, had the opportunity to go to the Womming. had the opportunity to go to the Warming Hearts, come and see what we offer engagement session. Um, it was great to see what Warming Hearts do in our community. Um, it's always amazes me how much of volunteer work, effort and time that they put, um, to, uh, make that possible in our community. So kudos to them for that. April first, uh, policing priorities, uh, I had that opportunity to, uh, engage with the Staff Sergeant as well. Um, on the fifth, um, had the, the opportunity to volunteer at the Drayton Valley Community Foundation's Ladies Gala. It was one of, uh, another very successful galas. Um, all the ladies seems to have enormously, uh, enjoyed the event and, uh, um, yeah, kudos to, uh, Community Foundation for putting, uh, another great event in our community. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, I think the ladies in the community absolutely loved that night. Uh, Counselor McGee?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Um, so Warming Hearts, uh, we had the opportunity to go there as everyone has mentioned. One thing that, uh, came to my mind is the, uh, the the amount of folks that we might have actually living at the landfill. I think it's as high as twenty people that have wintered, uh, outside, uh, which and who have the opportunity to come into Warming Hearts to gather food and, and for survival. Uh, it's, uh, never ceases, as Counselor Gomana mentioned, to amaze me, uh, how people can exist on very little. Uh, and, but we, we are there as a community to help the best way we can. And, um, we know that Opportunity Homes has now been given the, uh, grant to operate. So I, I think, uh, and then I notice in some of, uh, our correspondence that some other communities are wanting to come and look at the pots, which means that we can generally spread the story a little bit. So, um, uh, as Counselor Gomana mentioned, um, thank you to the volunteers at Warming Hearts, the gally and her team. Um, I've been speaking back and forth. Uh, Monica sits on the West Central airshed, but Yvonne, uh, has been connecting with me. We're heading into a celebration and you can report on that. And, uh, it's, it sounds like it's getting a little more excited. Um, and coming into the date as we head into May. Um, police priorities, uh, I thought were straightforward. One of the things that happens sometimes is I think, uh, if, if you've got four priorities, as we suggest, that's enough for priorities to get the work done. I don't know how they shift and how you change, but, uh, at least it was an opportunity for us to chat with, um, the Staff Sergeant about that. I actually went online to the Towns West in interview and and I, I thought, okay, well, just, just listen. And, um, the real, uh, benefit was to see our new C A O of, uh, the, uh, A M, uh, at work. And, uh, he comes out of government and, uh, I could certainly tell that. And lastly, the Ladies Gala. I, I crammed my feet into a pair of dress shoes. And I probably won't do that again. But it was a great time. Thank you.
Uh, Jeffy Mayor Sheriffs. Um, so I will repeat some of the things that other councillors have mentioned. Um, I have attended the mental health, uh, planning meeting. Uh, it's an event that is being sort of planned for January of twenty twenty six. Um, attended the FCS's spring board meeting, um, past fifty-second anniversary. And, um, just a reminder, um, for the rest of the council about, um, tomorrow, there's the Echoes of the Land, um, art show, grade five art show tomorrow at CTC. If anybody would like to attend. Um, that's about it.
Thank you very much for that. I'm just making a note here because I do have to talk to Pat about I'm double booked for that. I've got two things in my calendar. Uh, so for myself, um, yes, I had the opportunity, uh, with all of staff in council to celebrate fifty-two years barbecue yesterday for Mr. Vincent. It was so nice to see everybody come out and enjoy some laughs and have a little bit of a baking contest there. So congratulations to the winners for doing such a fantastic job and for your baking talent. Um, I've had a couple of mid-sized towns mayor's caucus meetings. Um, our numbers are growing, so it's nice to see. We now have thirty out of eighty-four small town or midtown, uh, communities. I'll discuss a little bit further enclosed of some of the updates there. Um, I've attended a charity golf meeting again. I think I've seen the town that we've posted now, uh, information on how, uh, you want to get tickets, how you want to get involved, donate, sponsor. We've picked three recipients of the golf charity. Uh, we have the stallery, we have the SIM lab at the hospital, and then we have the Purple Lights campaign. Um, and that is supporting, uh, women, uh, against domestic violence. So three really good causes. Uh, we're kicking off the mayor's gala. We had the first planning meeting. So, um, I'll talk a little bit more around, uh, about that in the roundtable discussions. And I as well attended the Towns West first meeting with, uh, Counselor McGee. I think that's the first one we've had since our, uh, Director's West has been appointed two or three years ago. So it's nice to have an update and to see, um, the new face of our C A O. I think, um, you know, to remember in all of this that Alberta Munis is, is doing the best job, you know, um, that they can do. And they're supporting, you know, trying to support all of the communities across Alberta. I know that the focus sometimes is on the big cities and it feels like we get left out, but, um, it was nice that we were, um, had an opportunity. There was quite a few people on that meeting, so it was nice to see, I think, just interested in to see what, uh, our West representative had to say and where that support is. Uh, I attended Warming Hearts as well. Uh, we got to engage with some of the, um, uh, I guess residents that are living at the landfill and, you know, just hear some of their stories and what's going on. It was nice to hear that a few of the ladies are seeking, um, or wanting to seek recovery, right? So they're trying to understand how they get the support and the help to move out of the situation that they're in. So I know sometimes that, you know, we look and say that, well, they don't want to change their situation. There's some that don't want to change their situation. It's clear. And there's others that do. And I think, uh, you know, I've seen a lot of desperation in their eyes and, and hope. So, um, you know, hopefully they keep that hope inside of their hearts and, you know, uh, we'll be able to assist them through FCS's Lola and, um, the ladies at Opportunity Home to get them the help that they need. Um, I also attended, uh, this isn't, uh, on my council, but I, I attended a, a house party in the community and it was, it was, uh, uh, a couple, they host, what they do is they bring in a, a musician or performer from across Canada and, and they sell tickets and they fill all these people in their house. And it was such an exciting night because it was nice to see the community come together, that our arts and culture and music is being celebrated outside of the venues and that this is something that they do quite often. And, um, the performer was Valdi. And I guess in his time, he's toured, uh, Canada and the States. And there were some songs, I knew one song, but, um, there was, uh, there were some that knew all the songs, but, you know, uh, he's a gentleman that's in retirement, still doing shows. He was heading to Jasper and I think Rocky Mountain House and somewhere down into the States. But it was just a reminder how amazing our community is and that you don't have to look very far to do something and, and find somebody that's celebrating and bringing people together. So it was just a really nice, a nice evening. Um, and then that wraps up my report for this morning. Is there a member of council that would like to accept the council reports as information? Counselor Sheriffs, thank you for that. All in favor? That is carried. Next up, we have council items, roundtable discussions. Uh, Counselor Gomana, maybe I'll start with you.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I have, uh, sent an email with some information regarding a, uh, golf tournament that's happening.
Did the Remax is hosting?
Remax is hosting, yeah. I was wondering, um, if there's any appetite for us to, uh, support this good cause. Um, I know the, uh, the county has, uh, has come on board. I don't know in which level that they're, they're supporting, but, um, the information is there. There's sponsorship opportunities. Uh, just wanted to bring it up and see if, uh, if you have any appetite to support this.
Thank you for that. Uh, yeah, I did receive a call as well. Um, I didn't know that they were having a, a golf tournament. I think that, uh, the charity that they're raising money for is the stallery as well. And I think that it's great if, um, you know, to get it out to the community to support. Uh, I know that there was, even when we had chosen the, the stallery as one of our recipients, people said, well, that's not a local charity. And you know, just a reminder that, you know, we have many children and many youth in our community that, uh, you know, we're very fortunate to have the stallery and have played a significant role, um, in our community's life. So it's nice that we can be supporting this in, I think, that any way that we can. Maybe what I'll do is hand it over to, uh, Mr. Vincent if you have further comment on this or the county or what you think that we could do to maybe help.
Madam Mayor, uh, to the Chair to all members of council, certainly will, uh, uh, review the information and see, uh, I'm sure that there will be members of council or administration like to participate as participants in the tournament. Also look at, uh, the sponsorship opportunities. So we can take a look at that and give back or, uh, present the report to council on that.
Perfect. Um, any other comments on that?
Only one, that is, it might be another good op- opportunity to continue the relationship with the county, um, uh, in, in, in a way that, uh, even on a golf cart, so.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, so I do have a few, um, roundtable discussions. Does any other councillors, before I start, have anything? Counselor Evans?
Yeah, if I may, I, I've just been kind of kicking around, uh, a, a little bit with, uh, some of administration. The couple of bad, pretty bad areas of our roads that I, I, we've been, we've been trying to, uh, patch and um, keep up with. So Fiftieth and Fiftieth, that turning lane is a mess and, and difficult to, to, uh, repair, uh, on a pothole basis. And also across from, uh, McDonald's, uh, that spot there that catches water, uh, and is, oh, we always have a significant hole there. And Shelley, after I, I mentioned it to her, she was kind enough to put together a little more information and how she feels we could get at it. Mostly I just wanted to bring it in front of council to see if we needed to maybe make some budget adjustments, uh, to hit these a little harder than just patching them. So I'll just, I'll let Shelley take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Miss Terry?
Thank you. Um, yes, so there, there's been a few areas in town that we've identified that we continue to repair over and over and over again. And the reason for this is, is the subgrade underneath has been compromised and our patches just will not hold. Um, so one, he's identified definitely is, is at Fiftieth and Fiftieth. And, and we believe that it has a lot to do with some of the heavier traffic in that area. Um, so with those bigger trucks making that turn there, um, it's, it's kind of punched out where the gutter is and the pavement meets. And that is extremely hard for us to repair and, and they're deep. So I'm waiting on getting some quotes from, um, some vendors to kind of see what, what the cost would be to, to cut out a bigger portion there, um, reinforce the subgrade with some soil cement. Um, put a thicker, um, amount of asphalt in there in that area, um, and, and repair the gutter as well at the same time, potentially making it a bit wider in that area. So I'm waiting for some quotes. I'm hoping to have those by the end of the week or early next week. Um, and again, with the one by McDonald's, um, it is constantly getting punched out and it's, it's a low spot where the water seems to sit and infiltrate underneath the asphalt. So, um, I've asked to get a couple of quotes to, um, put in a catch basin. There's a couple of different options we could do is, is cut out the curb and redefine that ditch there so that the water flows out. Or we put in, um, a catch basin in that area or both. Have both as an option if, if that culvert freezes and, and run a culvert out to get that water to drain in that lower area. So hoping to see those quotes come in. Um, but we are right now compiling a list of others that we have been continuously repairing. Um, we, we do recognize that Forty-third Street. There's quite a few on that one. However, that one, we're, we're in design stages this year. So we just finished our prequod engineering, um, for infrastructure work. So once we have all those agreements signed, we'll be sitting down with all of those engineers to come up with a plan for that entire strip. So this year we will just repair in-house, um, not put a bunch of dollars towards it because hopefully next year we're going to resurface that entire road. Um, with the potential of some other, um, can, traffic control measures at, at the new school. Um, but yeah, we are compiling a list and probably going to get some dollar figures because I don't believe the current budget we have is going to be able to support all of the bigger ones that we've identified that we continue to repair over and over and over again. Um, but I'll get that list to you guys in a report shortly.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Uh, does anybody else have anything? Counselor Clark?
Um, with Forty-third Street, um, and C N A's, I think, getting bumped up to the top of the list for a new school. Um, I don't know what their access would look like onto Forty-third. That may change. So I wonder if it'd be worth just roaching that subject with them to see, do you guys have any plans?
Uh, for the, the C N A's entrance exit?
Uh, if, if that's going to change.
Yeah, I, I do think that I should have some conversations with them because I, I do believe their entrance should be off of Forty-third Street and not off of Fiftieth because it creates a, a backlog of traffic in that area, um, every morning. So when their exits onto Fiftieth, um, so I do want to have a conversation with them, especially when we start looking at the design of that and strategizing our traffic controls and how we're going to keep school moving because it's going to be a big project. Um, so we'll have to have conversations with all the schools in that area to, to discuss these, this item for sure.
Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Um, back alleys. There has been, uh, some, uh, concerns actually because of water, um, and the snow that we had. Um, some of them have bigger holes. Do we have kind of a plan to address that?
Yeah, it's, it's difficult because a lot of them are still quite wet and we tend to do more damage than good going into them. Um, however, yes, there's, we do have, have budget to get some more gravel in some of these alleys that we've identified as, as issues. Um, and then the grader is going to have to come out and, and start doing that. Right now, our, our main focus, well, it was snow removal last week, but this week is potholes again. Um, and our crews filled over two hundred and fifty potholes. Some have already came back, so we're redoing those. However, we, we understood that this, these were temporary fixes. Um, currently we can only get cold mix. Asphalt plants are not open. You get better repairs with hot mix. And I can't get that hot mix until those asphalt plants start producing that. So, um, right now we're just doing what we can to kind of keep the peace. Um, and, and yes, they did, they have come back in a lot of locations. So.
Okay.
But yes, we will, we'll all, uh, talk to the Public Works Manager today and we'll come up with the strategy to get some back alleys focused on right away.
Okay. Thank you. The, uh, the next question I have is, um, when you come from Fiftieth and Fiftieth, um, there's, um, it used to be that, you know, you were able to turn left to go to the, uh, parking lot, but now it's been closed off. Would you know why? Is it the town closed off or is it?
Which parking lot, Noah?
Um, El Dorado, like when, when you come, um, past the Chinese restaurant on Fiftieth and Fiftieth on seven, in front of Seven Eleven. Um, you were used to, uh, be able to turn left there and then go to the parking lot and then cut through there. But now it's been closed off. Is, is it the town or is it the, uh, I, I'm curious that?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. I, I, we did not block it off. I assume it's still blocked off from when, um, they were doing the demolition stuff. No?
It was open, uh, for a while and now it's, I'm just curious.
Well, check it out. I'll, I'll have a look at it.
Yeah, I've tried to figure out where, like across from Shay or where Shayle is? By the church?
Across from Seven Eleven.
Oh, it's blocked off there.
Right.
Counselor Evans?
Yeah, when they, uh, when they spread black dirt and seeded that, they, they went beyond that, that entrance. So it's a, it's a mess. It's rutted right up from when people were going through there. I, I'm assuming that's why they blocked it off because it's no longer gravel there for an access. Um, the, the parking lot's sort of been limited further north. Um, and that's why I think it was, that, that was my assumption looking at it. You, you can see the deep ruts in there and everything. If we wanted to open that up, again, we'd have to remove all that, uh, all the black dirt that was spread out there and the seed and then run a, a little access, a gravel access up to there. So, uh, that, that's the reasoning anyway.
I'll, I'll look into it more and, and get some pictures and kind of figure out who, who blocked it off. Let me go over there.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Um, so I do have a few things, um, since you're here, Miss Terry, that I'll ask first. Um, I had brought up a question about, uh, the beaver traps. There's been, um, some questions raised that the weather's getting a bit nicer now, particularly by Ivan Toad. Um, how, um, well, I guess the beaver traps will be marked down there just because there's disc golfers that their, um, disc goes off the beaten path, so they can be in the creek or in the bush. So how will they be, the, um, they be marked?
Thank, thank you for the question. Um, so typically when we, when we do our trapping, so we'll always have the active trapping signs. trapping signs out so that public is aware that it could be in progress. Um, however, where we set the traps, we also set out a sandwich board that says trapping in this area. Uh, it's more of a cautionary thing for the public so they don't go into that section. Um, and they also ribbon off, off their traps so that people can better identify them. Um, and then muskrats are a little different. There's two, two different types of trapping we do. Muskrats, all we do is flag them because it, it, there is absolutely no hazard. They're in the water. They're not on, on that, that shoreline. Um, so there, there's no danger to the public on those ones and they're caged. They're not like a, yeah, not going to explain how the beaver trap works, but they're.
Catch and release.
Yeah, catch and release, yeah. Sure.
It's the way I like to think.
But yeah, so we will, um, I don't think in the past couple of years, we've had very much activity with the beavers in Ivan Toa area. I mean, we monitor it closely because we don't want that creek to, to flood. Um, but yes, I don't think last year we at all were in there.
Okay, perfect. So just if there is, they'll be clearly marked so that the disc golfers don't have to worry about.
Correct.
Stepping on something or a hazard or anything. Long, uh, Joint Council Open House. There is a request from the county again, uh, to run another joint open house. So, uh, what is everyone's appetite? I had, uh, spoke to Mr. Vincent about this and said, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to be able to include other things to talk about, not just the election, to kind of do an open floor if anybody has any questions or concerns. What are everyone's thoughts? Yeah? Yeah? Have another one? And do we feel we want to keep it just to, um, an election or do we want to have a, a bit of an open floor? Counselor Sheriffs?
So I absolutely would, uh, be in support of doing another one, maybe a different location, more central, uh, where people can socialize a little bit better maybe and definitely open to more than just the.
Engagement.
Engagement, the election and such, yeah.
Yep. Anybody else have any? We're good with that? Okay, perfect. So Mr. Vincent will coordinate that. Wonderful. Um, next up again, uh, Mayor's Gala. So we have chosen a date for the Mayor's Gala, which is September 18th. Um, just to put on all of council's radar, it'd be wonderful if, um, you'll all put that as a, um, save the date. Can we get a save the date in our calendars for that? Um, categories, uh, we talked about will be the same this year. Uh, depending on how many, uh, recipients we get for every category, we'll determine if that category stays on or not. Um, and I believe that the nomination packages will be going out in the next couple of weeks. Yep, okay. Um, so you'll see that communication out there again and just, um, it's early, but, um, just so it's out there and put in your calendars. Uh, as well as Alberta Council. Alberta Council, we talked about, um, uh, the services that they provide and trying to have time with MLAs and ministers and, uh, driving up our grants that are on the table and some of our advocacy efforts. There's been, uh, four dates that have potentially been chosen for them to host an evening and, um, the idea is to also invite Brazel County to that too, so we can be advocating on things together, particularly infrastructure funding or something, but we can decide what those agenda topics will be. And, uh, Pat has shared a few dates with Rudy from the county, so I will share, um, after the four dates with council, just to kind of put as a placeholder and to see what council thinks. Um, our MLA will be informed of that as well, once we get, uh, the date in place, that, that's what we're doing. Um, and I think that is it for my roundtable items. If nobody has anything else, um, we'll move along the agenda. We have two information items, uh, this morning. 11.1 is NSWA Letter Heritage River Commemorative Plaque. 11.2 is the letter from Municipal Affairs for the F S T P Grant Application for the Town of Drayton Valley. Uh, if there are a member of council that would like to accept these, uh, two items as information, please. Counselor McGee, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Do you have a question?
Just quickly speak to the commemoration plaque for the, uh, NSWA. It would seem to me that we should be connecting with E P B R, um, so Eagle Point Blue Rapids because we were all on sort of similar page. Um, but if there, a lot of that river, uh, that's close and near to us is, goes through the park. So probably we should, we should coordinate our education plaques if that's what they're going to be used as.
Perfect. Go ahead, Counselor Evans?
I'm not sure they were particularly happy about this designation. Were they not against it?
Yes.
Okay. Let them. It's been designated. Um, if, if we're interested in the plaque and further education, I guess that's the, the point and whether we are or aren't, I don't, I don't really know. We haven't really had a discussion on it. It's just here's information, right?
Yeah, it's just its information. Um, so they're asking if we're interested in pursuing this initiative. They'd be happy to help coordinate it.
So, given our opposition, are we interested?
No.
Is that a discussion? You, we're not interested.
Well, I'm speaking for myself, no. Um, anybody else want to speak to this?
Madam Mayor, through the chair to Counselor McGee and to all members of council, since I was aware of position of the town previously, we simply brought this forward as information without administration report or recommendation.
So unless council wants to add some life to this and bring it back?
Okay.
You're good? Okay, wonderful. Uh, so that wraps up our agenda, except for our closed session. Uh, 12.1, uh, Waste to Energy Proposal. Uh, is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed, please? And the motion is up on the screen. Counselor Clark?